The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Good evening, everyone. We'll begin this evening with a roll call. Lori?
Councilmember Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natvig.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Brad.
Present.
Six present, one absent, your honor.
Very good. Thank you, Lori. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on tonight's agenda, communications from the citizens. If there's anyone in council chambers that has an issue they'd like to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda, not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium.
You'll have to come to the podium, sir.
Give us your name and address.
My name is Kurt Beating. I live on Forest Parkway in Oak Manor addition. The city engineer tells me for about four years now, he's been trying to get that repaved out where it's all busted up. Are they ever gonna do anything with that? I'm waiting to do my driveway till I do something with that.
Okay, that's a good question. Randy, you want to respond to that?
Council, if you recall, the last couple of years, we've identified some streets that are in need of what we call full depth patch, but actually, it's a reconstruction of the road. And this year, Forest Parkway is what we have at the top of the list presented to the city council during our budget review. Last year was Dawson Street. This year is Forest Parkway. Now, what happens with that during the budget, you know, is in their hands, but it is...
Why, it's not on the ballot, down there.
No. But it is, it is our number one priority for this year.
You can hear the snow blow three blocks away. Six, my house.
You need to come to the budget session in February, well, basically, February.
The schedule's on the city's website, and it'd be the capital improvement program that you want to target. It'd be towards the end, probably the second week in February, around the 10th, 11th, or 12th, somewhere around there.
And by the way, the budget sessions are open to the public.
Thank you.
So, okay, moving right along, item A, under communications with the citizens. Councilman Bynum and Mike Raywell, would you join me by the podium? Greg, I'm turning the show over to you for a little bit.
I told Greg we'd put you in the front.
Mr. Wise, you be quiet.
We just want to see you, Bob.
Well, if you could raise your right hand and follow after me, I'd appreciate it. I, state your name.
I, Robert Bynum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Iowa.
And I will support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of mayor or city council member.
Of mayor. Fourth ward, city councilman.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As near, excuse me, as now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. If I could get a signature, if I could get a signature here, I'd appreciate it. And I didn't.
Didn't bring a pen. Here you go.
Didn't we do that two years ago? Think we did. Little green suit.
Thank you.
There's no queue card.
Congratulations, ma'am. Congratulations, personally. Nice girl.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, item number five on our agenda for this evening is the consent agenda. Following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members or requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A, items 8A through D, filing of communications, which is 12A through G, and tonight's bill's totally $1,2391 and 57 cents? Motion, anyone?
So moved.
Second, your honor.
Mark and second Phil. Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six zero. Dropping down to item number seven, public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed amendment to chapters four and five of Title 10 of the city code pertaining to floodplain management regulations. In order for the city regulations to be compliant with federal regulations, they must be revised to incorporate the recently revised FEMA, or flood insurance rate maps, firm, that go into effect April 16th, 2014. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Motion to close by Osama and a second.
Second.
Second. Tom?
Fighting over it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries six zero. Item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed Cedar Street reconstruction project. The engineers' estimated cost without a 10% contingency is $3,650,414. Other projects impacting this project, extension of the Papoose Creek culvert, Cedar Street clearing, Cedar Street utility upgrades and replacement, and Logan Street culvert extension, are either completed or under construction. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Motion to close, anyone?
No, no.
Yes, sir. Come to the podium, tell us your name and address, please.
I'm Paul Krausler, and I live on, just off of Cedar Street. Just, I don't know if this is the time to speak about this. I just was curious in regards to the roundabout. Is the third turn lane being maintained all the way from Param to Hauser Street with the new changes?
Not through the roundabout.
Yeah, I'm just curious how this works. When you've got a third turn lane that starts at Param, what happens at the roundabout, and then what happens after the roundabout?
John, you want to go ahead and...
You want to address that?
City engineer.
Thank you, Paul.
John, let's, city engineer. The design for the Cedar Street, the typical cross section, is 43 feet wide, and it includes a center turn lane. And at other intersections like Wood Creek, Stone Brook, yeah, and the high school, it widens out to, with a turn lane or a taper lane. But otherwise, it's a standard except for the Logan intersection.
And...
At Imperial Oaks, we did not put a taper lane on that intersection.
John, you want to mention coming into the roundabout, how there's a raised median, and how far out that goes?
Yeah, there's an, the median from the Logan side, I'm believing, is about 50 feet long, a center median. From the east side, coming into the roundabout at Logan, it would, on Cedar Street, it'd be about 100 feet long, and probably 200 feet long on the west side to separate the traffic as it's coming into the intersection.
Thank you, John. Take close. You sure can, Paul.
And so, are we still having the trail on the north side that's going to extend from Param all the way to Hauser? Because I've read that there is, it's safer to get pedestrian traffic through a roundabout. How does, how does that, I just don't know how it works. I'm looking for disclarification. To get from Logan Street over to that trail, how does a pedestrian access that intersection since the traffic from all directions never stops? I don't know how. Do you go to the roundabout center and then cross it again on the other side, or is there a crosswalk on one side or the other? You know, I just don't know.
John, go ahead.
On each approach leg of the roundabout, there is a, we already discussed, there's a center island, and the pedestrians will cross each lane of traffic separately. And so, whereas on an intersection where you have 43 feet wide to cross at once, the roundabout will have, pedestrian will only have to cross one lane of traffic at a time, and then be able to stop at the, at the island in the middle, and then cross the second lane of traffic. And so, actually, they only have two lanes of traffic to cross, and they can cross each one individually and wait, and look the other direction for the other traffic to cross. No pedestrian traffic goes to the center of the roundabout. That's, that's just going to be maintained currently as a, as a green space, and with a truck apron on it, and pedestrians don't really belong there. They can cross on any leg that comes to there. So, there's a real good way to get from the Logan sidewalk to the north side, the Stone Brook side of the roundabout, you know, very easily. Yes, the, the traffic does not stop on the roundabout. Pedestrians do have the right of way, but typically, in a situation, people watch for a car, and they let it go by, and then, and then cross. You know, people, at least in this area, generally, don't step out in front of the traffic while it's moving. They may in a college town, but generally...
Follow-up question. Sorry, I'm taking, but I, since I live on this street and my business is on this street, I see a lot of pedestrian traffic, especially high school students walking to the school. So, is there a, I think it's, because the trail is being there, we should have the students especially, since that's whom I see most on this thing, other than the early morning walkers or the day walkers. Is there a shoulder that may encourage the students to try to stay on that street, or is it going to basically require them to get over to that trail? Because I'm fearful that if there isn't some way to make sure they get to the trail, they're still going to be walking on the street. And I don't think that's a safe thing, and never have, and I've always been in support of this trail, but if we don't get the students and everybody over on that trail, so is there a space that they could assume is where they're supposed to walk on Cedar Street, or is it going to focus them all over onto the trail?
So, the full distance of Cedar Street from Param to the high school and slightly beyond has a 10-foot wide trail on the north side, and typically, there is an eight-foot wide grass space in between the 10-foot wide trail and the back of the curb on the street. So, you know, we feel that people will walk on the trail versus along in the grass in that area. At certain locations, the trail does diverge slightly further to create some variety in the environment and lessen the dirt work on the project. But we feel that people will use the trail if it's there.
What about the south side of the Cedar Street, I think, is the other part of the question, as I said.
The sidewalks start, on the, on the west end, the sidewalks start at Hauser Street, and they go past the high school, past the medical complex, and over to Imperial Oaks. And at that point, the sidewalks stop on the south side. There's a crossing to get to the north side at that location. It's quite a long distance in that stretch down to Logan, and I think people will just get used to, hey, switching over to the trail side. They start typically on the high school side regardless there. I think they'll get used to just using that side all the way down.
And then, the south side, there is curb and gutter, the full length of the roadway.
Correct. There will not be a paved, flat shoulder. It will be a street and a curb and gutter, and a certain distance of a grass shoulder, and then it will slope off to the existing grade.
And so, at Logan Street, there's a connecting crosswalk to get to the trail? I mean, they're not going to have to walk on grass, there's a crosswalk?
Yes, there will be sidewalks on both sides of Logan, and then they can cross the approach areas on either side, either on the east side or the west side of the intersection at Logan and Cedar.
So, on the north side, there will be connection from the street down to the trail. They're not walking on the grass?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Or the shoulder.
Yeah.
There won't be one. Very good. Thank you for your questions, Paul. Thank you, John. I have a gentleman in the back of the room first, sir. Roger, did you want some time here?
Yes.
Three minutes?
Roger Roth, Clark House. While he was convincing you that Wednesday night on the roundabout, I was talking to the Iowa Department of Transportation, I asked, "What's the price for a roundabout over a couple of turn lanes?" They told me, from what they gathered from me on the area, $300,000 for turn lanes, $750,000 for a roundabout. That's a little excessive when people are more used to turn lanes. I don't see any major accidents just on the turn lanes we got on the main drag alone. With the turn lanes, it'd be a lot simpler for, even for pedestrian and bicycle traffic to negotiate. Now, they may say we can put in a place for bicycles, but I'd rather go someplace I'm used to, something I know I'm a little safer with. The roundabout has something called centrifugal force when you go around it. Yeah, 20 miles an hour. But the sad thing is, the laws of nature is not very merciful for even as much as a micro mistake when you do around a roundabout. You're going to have your accident. On the turn lane, going from the city, you may see yourself with an island. We can make it a pseudo-island for the longer trucks, like fire trucks, because you've got a major housing in the area, you've got a care center there, you've got the Y there. They may need to get through there. Again, the micro mistake of nature, hey, that's that fire truck that's swinging around at whatever's necessary speed, is still going to have a problem. You got to reconsider, reconsider with the price alone. Why can't we just go cheaper with something that people are used to? People that can, that have learned how to negotiate with turn lanes as opposed to a roundabout. Iowa City, Davenport, major cities, we are a tiny town compared to them. They got much more money. Last time I was in Iowa City, they could have optioned for turn, for roundabouts all the way down the one main drag. Instead...
Roger, your three minutes are up. Thanks for your comments and questions.
Instead, they went cheaper, the turn lanes.
Yes, sir.
You also have three minutes, sir. I emailed my city councilman. I've been familiar with roundabouts, and I was in Pennsylvania, I was in downtown Gettysburg. Trying to watch the traffic and the pedestrians, I found it was much easier to go a block on my way and avoid the whole roundabout and walk the extra block than trying to not run over a pedestrian or hit a car. I have been roundabouts in Wisconsin, out of rural areas that worked real, real well because there's not much traffic. I have been in, in Colorado, and they had a roundabout where it's not much used. There is a lot of traffic on Cedar Street at certain times, and I am concerned that people are still going to have to stop, because when you have heavy traffic, you're going to have to yield to the person from your left. People are going to have to stop, and it's going to be on a hill. Also, it's winter right now, and the snow removal in Muscatine has not been, been the best. I, I know that when, when it gets below zero, after a snow, it's still going to be slick because the, it's going to be, the temperature's going to be cold enough that the salt won't If you don't keep that roundabout properly maintained, there's going to be accidents. The idea of someone crossing there in the morning, the afternoon, it is not, it is not safe. I, it's not safe for the driver, not safe for the pedestrians. So, if the roundabout is built, I will invite the mayor, the city manager, the city planner, and the person who designed it to visit me down there, and we'll cross there during, during my, my choice of times, and, and then you, he can see what, and everybody can see what, what they designed. That, that's an open invitation. If it's built, I'll call you people, and we'll go down there, and we'll cross the street when I, when I decide.
I would accept that invitation, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir?
One more thing. I go down 34 all the time to Lake Rethen, and I go around that roundabout down there, the tunnel. They didn't build it big enough for semis, so they put a sign up for, it's all right for the semis to drive on the sidewalk. Is this thing going to be built big enough to let a semi run?
It's designed for 55-foot-long semis, is that correct, John? 50-foot trailer. 53-foot trailers, yes, thank you.
Those semis went around to one down there, they couldn't do that without driving on the sidewalk.
And, and as well for an aerial fire, fire truck.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Denise Wright. I regret that this is the first meeting I've come to about this roundabout, and I've talked to lots of other people, as I'm sure these have too, that, it doesn't seem that I have found one person that really agrees that this will be the best solution for that particular intersection. I'm concerned as well about the pedestrians. I'm also concerned about our emergency vehicles, and how that's the straight shot out of town, and I can't see that that would be beneficial for them to have to go with that roundabout, especially with the fire trucks. And I know you said that it's big enough, but I would like to see that in action in another city and watch that actually play out before we actually put money into having it here. And also, with the snow removal equipment, I'm not sure how they do that with a roundabout. I would be curious as to if we have seen that in play.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Yes, sir?
I'm another resident that lives on West Bay Drive, down the street from Denise, and I travel a lot on Cedar Street. I would really like to know what kind of a comparison there is between traffic flow on Carver Corner and traffic flow at Cedar and Logan. Someone has determined that a roundabout is not appropriate on Carver Corner, but for some reason, is appropriate at Logan and Cedar. Now, I don't know if any of you have tried to get on the Cedar Street when the traffic is backed up from the stop sign at the high school, back up to Hauser. It can be quite difficult to get somebody to yield to you getting off of West Bay Drive on the Cedar Street when they're sitting still. In order for a roundabout to work, traffic has to yield to somebody else. For somebody to get off of Logan on the Cedar, traffic on Cedar has to yield. Do you think that line of traffic is going to stop very well, going down there at the speed they're going to be traveling to let somebody out from Logan? I submit to you that the only really logical solution at that intersection is a traffic light that activates when somebody wants to get from Logan on to Cedar Street. That would not only make sense for the traffic that flows on Cedar Street, I submit to you it'd be a whole lot safer for pedestrians that are crossing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else in council chambers?
No.
Okay.
The cars are not going to stop on this roundabout, right? If you want on Logan, on Cedar Street off of Logan, you got to yield to the cars that are on that roundabout, the way I understand it. I just like to throw that out, because that's what's going on in the tunnel. All streets have to yield to whoever's on the roundabout.
Thank you again for your comments. Any other comments? Oh, yes, ma'am. Joni?
Side streets have to yield to who's on...
Joni Exel, 208 West Second Street, and I'm the community program manager for the Blue Zones Project. And I know that all of you who are, and I absolutely understand what all of the concerns are, but over the course of about six or eight months, perhaps even more, there's been a, really a large amount of research, and there's been a lot of expert time and engineering time dedicated to the makeup of a, a good, livable, walkable street on Cedar Street for all users. And I think one of the, I know it's important for all of us because we're all in our cars all the time, but it's very important that we think about Cedar Street as everybody's street, and that we think about it as a school street, and a senior citizen's street, and a West Bay Drive street, and all the users on those streets, on that street. And I don't have all the backup data for the engineering studies, but I know they've been done in good faith, and there's been an awfully lot of examination of other communities and other solutions, and one of the outcomes of all of this is calming the traffic. I just came down that way, and I was going 50, should not have been, and there were people going 65 miles an hour. I mean, it really is, it really is not supposed to be a, it used to be coming into town in the rural street, when you got to Param, you were in town. So, there is a real effort here to try to make this street, a street for all users, dogs, grandmas, you know, kids, students, everybody, and for the Y, and for all of the users on that street. So, even though it may sound like it's to be an anti-traffic effort, it is, is really in our, in our point of view, to make the street much more livable and usable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Joni. I do have one question. Has there been a traffic count? Has there been a traffic count, Steve? Randy? John? At the, and I'm going to single out one intersection, Logan and Cedar.
Yes, when we went about performing the, the design for the roundabout, we performed additional traffic counts. We had, we had intern students actually sitting there during the peak periods and counting, you know, pedestrians, trucks, cars, and for every five-minute period. And we tallied that information and sent that to DOT, to the roundabout experts, and, and we did a capacity analysis on the intersection to determine whether it was appropriate to put a roundabout there. And they, what they determined was that we have two times more, the, the roundabout that's being proposed has two times more the capacity than our actual street traffic at the peak hours, is what they presented back to us.
Okay, isn't exactly what I was looking for, but that's good.
John, may I ask a question, please?
I'm sorry, sure, sure.
What's the, what was the timeframe of that study? Make it easier. During school hours or at, or summer?
No, well, what we found out was that as school was getting out, that's what we were doing. It was the beginning of the summer while school was still in session. So we, we, we checked to see what the traffic was at 3:30, and then at 5:00, and then again in the morning at, at 8:00, when the school rush is going on, 7:30 to 8:00.
Not, not between 8:00 and 8:30?
We, we watched the peak traffic, and we monitored those periods that had the peak traffic. And so we, the first few days, we, we monitored the full period to see when the peak traffic was, and then on other days, we monitored a shorter period of time and, and found the similar results on the.
I just know that during what I considered, considered peak time, trying to get out of my driveway on Hauser-Mulberry intersection, it used to be 10 minutes to 8:00, I might as well forget it, but now it's 10 after 8:00, or quarter after 8:00, and it's a nightmare. So I just wondered if you were there after 8:00 o'clock, so.
Yeah, we, we covered all, both of those periods to find out when the peak.
Very good, John, thank you. Jack, you have to come up to the microphone, sorry. And, and you can do that, but I have to ask you to step up to the microphone.
It's Blue Zone activity, you got to walk to the podium.
I just wanted to ask, I had been very curious as to the comparison of the traffic flow at Carver Corner and the traffic flow at Cedar and Logan during peak times, and why one was not appropriate, but the other one is.
The, the approximate daily traffic on Logan is around 3,500, and on Cedar, it's approximately 8,000, and that's in both directions. I'm not aware of the counts off the top of my head on, on Carver Corner.
I'm going to answer part two, though. A roundabout is appropriate for that intersection and is one of the options that was determined by IDOT. There were three options, one of those options was a roundabout. The option that was recommended ended up not being the roundabout, but it is an appropriate solution for that intersection.
As far as, from my perspective, when we voted on the, the, the roundabout, or, or the one of three solutions that we came up with on, on the Carver Corner, the roundabout and straightening out the street was more expensive than the solution that we're using currently, we voted on. It maintains more of the new concrete that we put in, in the last several years. So we're jogging over and lining up with Green Street seemed like the most economical solution.
I'll quit after this. I don't mean this to be offensive to anybody, but the IDOT also is the one that first designed the bypass on Hershey Avenue and later changed their mind.
Very good, thank you, Jack. And thank you, John. Ma'am, you have additional comments? And this will be the last, folks.
Because this is my first meeting, and I'm sorry to say that, what were the other options that were available and were looked at? And then also, have, have we ever interviewed any of those police officers and emergency vehicles that have to use a roundabout in other cities? And how do they view that, and how do our people in Muscatine view that?
We've had discussions at our, at our traffic meetings where people are represented, different groups of the cities, and we've had general discussions about, you know, the roundabout and how it will function. And we have not had negative comments from public safety regarding those meetings and discussions. We haven't interviewed people directly and, and said, you know, hey, fire engine driver, how, how will this work for you? But we haven't as a whole heard negative comments come back from public safety regarding that. Regarding the design of the intersection, we had a design for a T-intersection. It had a considerable larger amount of pavement and actually had a right turn lane coming from, if you were driving in towards town, so you would have to cross four lanes of traffic at a time for pedestrian crossing on that side. So we decided, hey, that's not even a good place to put one. So we were removing the sidewalk crossing from the west side. Then on the east side, you know, you had three lanes of traffic, so it was a reasonable way to get people across. However, the traffic was never going to stop. We didn't intend to stop the traffic with the T-intersection. And if we did decide to stop the traffic with stoplights, you know, there's $150,000 cost right off the bat that we would add to the project. I think there was a lot of push not to put signals there at an intersection. I think people don't really, we didn't get the sense that there was any consensus that, that council wanted a stoplight at the intersection. So the original design, as it was discussed, had a T-intersection with, without signals.
Very good, thank you, John. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Tom, and a second?
Second.
Second, Bob, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, from the city administrator, item number 11, 11A, presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance amending chapters four and five of Title 10 of the City Code relating to floodplain management regulations. In order for the city's regulations to be compliant with federal regulations, they must be revised to incorporate the recently revised FEMA flood insurance rate maps that go into effect April 16th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
And a second, Osama, any discussion, council? This is a roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Next item presented for city council's consideration is the second and final reading of an ordinance vacating an unimproved portion of the Charles Street right-of-way. The property owner at 2218 New Hampshire Street is requesting a vacation of a 1,474-square-foot unimproved portion of the Charles Street right-of-way to accommodate an existing garage mistakenly constructed on a small portion of the unimproved portion of the right-of-way. The property owner has requested city council waive the city council rules and adopt the ordinance on final reading and direct for its publication as required by law. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on final readings as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
Second, Tom, any discussion? And beginning with Jeanette, a roll call vote.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Item C, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the sale of city property. In its previous action, city council took action to vacate 1,474 square feet of unimproved portion of the Charles Street right-of-way. This property is now being sold to the property owner at 2218 New Hampshire Street. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second.
Second, Jeanette, discussion? Roll call, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Item D, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving an executed deed for the vacated 1,474 square feet of an unimproved portion of the Charles Street right-of-way. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Bob?
Second.
Second, Osama, discussion? And a roll call, beginning with Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Item E, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting the bid opening date for the Cedar Street reconstruction project. The engineer's estimated cost without a 10% contingency is $3,650,414. Other projects impacting this project, extension of the Papoose Creek Culvert, Cedar Street clearing, Cedar Street utility upgrades and replacement, and Logan Street Culvert extension, are either completed or under construction. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second.
Second, Jeanette, discussion?
I have some comments to make here. I've gone online and looking at some, I guess, other comparable professionals. The one is from the, the abbreviation I wrote down was FHWA. I assume that's Federal Highway Association Roundabout Guide, Section 6.3.11, which there, in general, it said, in general, or generally, it's not desirable to locate a roundabout in a location where grades through the intersection are greater than 4%. And then another one was the entry grade profile should be leveled out as not to exceed 3%. The, the grade with, in my discussion with the city engineer, the grade through the intersection, actually in the roundabout, is at about 2% to 2.5%, depending on which way you're going. The approach to that intersection on Logan is about 4%. And the approach coming, going, coming or going into town on Cedar Street is anywhere from 5.4% to 5.6%. I don't, I haven't felt that this was appropriate for this, this location. Jack Burns used the same comment that, that I used earlier, making reference to DOT designing the bypass, and they've had professionals did that also, and then they figured out that they were wrong. And that particular intersection he was talking about, I think, killed about 12 people before they actually fixed it. They could have saved some, maybe not saved money, but they could have managed to maintain the existing grade that was there and then put the bridge in, rather than filling it up and then, whatever, 10 years later, taking it all back out again and putting the grade that was existing back in, and then put a bridge in place. So my opinion of a roundabout has never been high. Carver Corner would have probably been a better location because it's flat. The roundabouts, my son lives in Johnston, Iowa, there's roundabouts all over the place in that area, and they're all on a flat grade or near flat grade. I've personally slid down Cedar Street. I've watched vehicles that can't go up Cedar Street because of snow and ice. I'm sure that the city staff will make sure that it's, that I'm wrong, and that it will be salted to beyond belief, so that it is passable. But in my, I, I can't, I can't sit here and vote for the Cedar Street project knowing that this is going into that location. So you will have me voting no, and I assume I will be one of a few. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else, council?
Mayor, I'll, I'll just, I was the other no vote on this roundabout when, when we voted on it. And not, again, not that I have anything against roundabouts, there are appropriate places for roundabouts where they work very well. But I, I certainly agree with Councilman Fitzgerald's sentiments on, on the grade and location, but making it even simpler, I cannot, I, I cannot see how a roundabout is going to be $100,000 more effective or safer than putting in a three-way stop or a pedestrian right-of-way. And those are the same comments that I made when we voted on this, so.
Anyone else, council?
Well, I will make, I will ask a couple of questions as well here. Let's say we proceed with putting a roundabout on Cedar Street here. I don't know, off the top of my head here, how much state and federal funds going towards this project here out of the whole amount of 3 million, 3.6 million here. Let's say it's installed, it doesn't work well. What's our option here? Live with it, or tough?
Enjoy it for 50 years?
You know, it's legitimate. I mean, you're going to experience a lot of accidents, it's going to be whatever, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen down the road. So what's, where do we go from there? Is there an alternative? Is there a contingency plan in place to modify any of the?
Assuming Randy you'd like to respond to.
Well, I mean, it just.
John's comments.
There's not a contingency plan.
Sure.
This is what has been directed for us to design, and it's what we've designed. Let's, you know, back up just a little bit and make sure people recognize that over 10-year period, there's been over 100 accidents on this road. And the traffic count, you had asked earlier, is 8,000 vehicles per day, and this was in 19, or 2007, 2008, and I'm sure it's increased. And most of those accidents, many of them, are rear-enders. And putting in traffic signals or stop signs not going to stop people from sliding down the hill if they're going too fast, or keep them from going up the hill if it's too slick. The, the fact of the matter is, is that if goes in there and it is a disaster, then sure, it is ours to go out there and make immediate changes, the way the state did over on Hershey. And I guess I could stand up here and be somewhat defensive of DOT and point out to everyone's profession how error's been made, you know, and have been back and corrected. But they did go back and correct it, you know, and if that's, was the case, you know. But quite frankly, I have not seen anybody change the roundabouts, and they're going in all over the place, going back to the other way that it once was. And so I can't imagine that Muscatine motorists are that unable to negotiate roundabouts any more than any other people in the state of Iowa, state of Wisconsin, Colorado, Pennsylvania, wherever it might be. You know, FHWA stands for the Federal Highway Administration, Phil. And Federal Highway Administration had to pass on this project before it was even agreed to be funded. So they did review this roundabout. And if they had had a problem with it, they could have said no, and could have pulled it at that point. But they did not, and it has been set for this public hearing and for a bid letting in January. So I can only tell you, Councilmember Shahadeh, that if there is a major disaster, we would both go there and close it down immediately to correct it, just like we would with anything, anyplace, because we don't want to see people get killed, hurt whatsoever. But I do, you know, want to point out that throughout this whole thing, I haven't heard of a safer way to get people across Cedar Street. Certainly a three-way stop, traffic signals, and what, quarter of a mile, three of them from Hauser High School down to Logan, you know. I, I'm not sure how people are going to get across over to the other side of Cedar Street safely, you know. That's going to be any more safe than, than the roundabout. But as far as the contingency plan, councilmember, no, this is what's been designed, and that's where we are with it.
Randy, before going too far, I mean, Federal Highway's reviewed it, IDOT's reviewed it, IDOT's expert has reviewed it, and we've had an independent expert review it as well. If... If, if we do not do the roundabout, we will not have a letting in January. The project will be delayed at least six months, if not longer.
At least, because if we don't do that, if... This isn't a threat, this is the process, okay? If you choose not to do it, then we have to come back to you and find out what you want to do, go back to DOT, put together a new concept statement that has to be reviewed, come back with a revised plan, has to go through the whole process. There would not be a 2014 construction of this project. I'll guarantee you that.
It's our recommendation to proceed with it. It's more efficient, it's safer for pedestrians, it works. There's plenty of examples around the state. Marion's putting in two more this year, they've just put in a couple. We know it works, and we think this is a good intersection for it. This is not what we came up originally. We had this as a, as a traditional intersection with a stop on Logan Street. This was recommended by Dan Burden, who's an international, nationally-recognized walkability expert around the, around the country, around the world. And this was their concept they came up with. And we followed up on it, talked to numerous experts, and it works at this intersection.
I would have go one, one other step. Chance of irritating anyone, fine. But we decided to put a trail along the other side of the street to make sure the traffic, or the pedestrian traffic would use that trail. Now we're trying to get students and pedestrians across that Logan Street. We have a sidewalk that comes from Howser, John, you said went down to Imperial Oaks. If you would take that sidewalk on down to Logan and the Y, if they wanted to go around the Y, whatever they wanted to do, a student could get, wouldn't have to worry about crossing at that particular intersection. They could walk all the way out to the high school and cross at the light. They could go up to Forest Parkway and cross where the grade is flat or reasonably flat. So by putting in the, the trail on the side that we did, we have aggravated the situation to where this seems like the best solution to the, to the project. There again, I don't think it is, but at this point in time, unless council wants to postpone the project for another full year, I guess it, it's up to them at this point.
Any other comments? Discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Tom and a second by Jeanette. Discussion has concluded, this is a roll call, Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Phil?
No.
And Mark? Motion carries, I believe that's five to one. Item F, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting the completed work for the West Hill Storm and Sanitary Sewer Separation Project, Phase One, and authorizing final payment. The city entered into a contract for this project with Langman Construction in the amount of $3,688,235.27. There were seven change orders totaling $33,381.16 and a bid item adjustments resulting in a deduction of $3,623.78 for a final contract amount of $3,717,992.65. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil, and a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second Osama, any discussion? On a roll call, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item G, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. Periodically, city staff provides to city council a request for the assessment of nuisance abatement costs against private property owners. At this time, staff is forwarding the assessment list for unpaid abatement costs totaling $22,132.89. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
That's Bob, and a second?
Second.
Second Jeanette, any discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to commend the Steve Balkin's staff on, on, on doing the weed cutting and getting the junk moved out of sight, out of mind, and it's a great job.
Anyone else, council? Okay, Bob, beginning with you.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item H, presented for city council's consideration is a request to accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR, an audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013. The CAFR was completed earlier this month and with the meeting between the auditor and the audit committee taking place on December 12th. This meeting included a review of the city's CAFR management letter and summary report. Following its approval, this report will be submitted to the various federal agencies, State Auditor's Office, the city's financial advisor, the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate Program, and various other interested individuals or entities. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Give that to Phil?
Second.
Second Tom, any discussion?
Participating in the audit committee, it's realization, I think, by most people here that Nancy and her team has done an excellent job with the finances for Muscatine, or the city of Muscatine, and should be commended for their work.
And she always has done a good job.
Been doing it a long time. I mean, not that she's old or anything, but I've been here a long time, and they continually, continually get an award for their presentation, so.
We might change our mind here come end of January when the budget starts, so. See how that goes, so.
So take advantage of the time now, Nancy, and stand up and take a bow.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a vote, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Down to item 14, communication from council members. And as I understand it, there's a message coming out of Councilman Lorette.
You start with me, all right. All right, well, tonight is my last meeting as a member of Muscatine City Council. And I just wanted to take a few moments to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve the city of Muscatine for the last four years in this role. I've long been interested and involved in politics, and I have enjoyed the opportunity to contribute to trying to continue to make Muscatine a great place to live. Specifically, I'd like to thank my family for allowing me the time to be involved. My oldest son Brennan is here tonight, and it is his birthday, so happy birthday, Brennan. But that cake before the meeting was actually for me, so. I'd also like to thank my current and former fellow council members for their efforts. I've enjoyed working with all of them. I've been very impressed with the respectful and thoughtful approach that this group has taken. We've worked very well together, and I think that's a big part of the reason why we've been so successful and have so much momentum moving forward. We've done a lot of good things, and it's because we have a lot of talented, dedicated people. And that includes our city staff. I want to make sure I thank them because they have done an excellent job. That has been my observation over the last four years. Like to thank Mayor Hopkins and former Mayor O'Brien. I've had the honor to work with both for two years. I don't think we could have done better at mayor's position than we have done.
Thank you.
They were nice enough to get me a gift. This is an Oscar Grossheim photo of the trolley, the railcar, up at the top of West Hill, near our family's home. So thank you for that as well. I do have one more announcement this evening. One of the issues that came up over the course of this election is that I have been involved in the primary, the Republican primary, for the state house representative position that has opened up that Representative Lofgren is vacating to run for Congress. I have recently had my supervisor at work retire, and I am taking on added responsibilities at my place of employment, Central Incorporated, North Liberty. And because of that, I don't feel I'm going to have the time necessary to do justice to a campaign for that office and even if it was successful, to be able to serve and give the time to it that it deserves. So tonight I am announcing my withdrawal from that race, and I wish good luck to the other two candidates in that race. But I will not be, I will not be involved in that, in that race, so. Again, thank you very much. I've really enjoyed, enjoyed being a part of this, and I wish you all good luck as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
I'd like to say it's been a pleasure to have you working with us, and thank you for your four years of service. And I'd like to wish the staff, the citizens of Muscatine and council a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all.
Thank you, Phil.
Councilman Shahadi? I will do the same here with Phil, first of all, for Councilman Lorette. Thank you for your service here over the last four years. It was a pleasure working with you as well. And I would like to congratulate you on having your Thursday nights off moving forward. So you should be congratulated for that, so that's, that's good. But it's been a good ride, and your contribution was well-taken here, and we thank you for that. And like Phil said here, for the community as a whole, happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bynum?
Mayor, I'd like to tell Mark, it's been a great four years. It's been great working with you. You brought a lot of topics to the table and a lot of things thinking outside the box. Again, that you'll be missed. I'd like to wish the current staff and also the city of Muscatine Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Phillips?
Thank you. I like to echo what they said, and Mark, will you well be missed, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Very good. Councilman Fred?
It's tough to be the last guy. I don't, I don't even get to use the word echo. Thanks, Jeanette. But my sentiments mirror everyone else's, Mark. I've been, been involved for two years. It's been a pleasure working with you, appreciate the help, and certainly respect the service that you've given to the community. And I know that you'll be around to help us in the future in various capacities, so. And to the community at large, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Lori Frye, sitting in for Fran Donaldson. No pressure, but I hope you got everything written down here tonight.
I tried, did my best.
Any comments?
Have a Merry Christmas.
Okay, Greg?
I too would like to thank Mark for his commitment and service to the city of Muscatine. It's been an honor to work with you on behalf of the staff. We appreciate your time and effort and wish you the best going forward. Merry Christmas to all, have a great holiday.
And I too want to thank Councilman Lorette. I've worked with him on a couple of projects. He will certainly be missed on the council, but I would also remind him that the mayor's got like 15 committees, and I have him earmarked for a slot or two within those 15. So again, to the community of Muscatine, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for your vote in re-electing me to this position. I look forward to another couple of years of great cooperation with a great council, and I look forward to working also with a new council member, Mike Raywald, so. Any other business, council? Is there a motion to adjourn? Meeting is adjourned.